Can't find.
Huh? We need more building.
The spending can't be sucking the life out of us.
We need more, we need more.
So many guys doing the little Speedway signs, I see something is happening in that camp.
Yeah, that's so.
Yeah, they're supposed to be. I'm not sure. They're supposed to close on anybody they're not toward.
They're looking for one better one.
We're not, not at heart.
I have two kids in peace.
All right. Well, we'll do our best.
It seems like you want. It's crazy. Yeah, I don't know, man.
The hammer of Thor's idiot younger brother.
Let's fight over the gallows. No, he doesn't throw at anybody. Hey, how you doing?
Okay, I wanted to make sure I could get logged in, she kept knocking on stuff.
Maybe she got two levels of.
Actually, no.
I did not hear your story about your parallels, but I've always thought nurse cars would be.
Yeah.
Yeah? Right? Make them racing.
Like bubble. Pass transit where you just get on. You don't know. Nothing to worry about there. Tim, don't, don't let Jeff Zarth here.
Yeah.
Oh, I read that.
People always laugh at me when I say that.
Those people who go to the symphony can drive themselves.
I mean, it might need a little of that.
Uh huh. Jeff is a lovely man. He's very focused. Um, I was on the health clinic board with him for a while. He, um, his passion is restoring Corvettes.
Oh.
And you could eat off the floor of his garage, and I'm not kidding. But he donated a restored Corvette to the National Corvette Museum in, um, Olden Creek. And it got eaten by a sinkhole. It had a sinkhole opened up in, in the museum and it swallowed his car.
I've heard of that.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
He's also got.
Anytime you're ready.
All of them. You see this mirror, that all of them, that's just. You kind of make it crack.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. I guess first we need to do a public comment. I don't see anybody here, so. Good there.
I, I just, I've just been doing my own internal surveys of the, of what young people want in the city. And it tracks very well, I think, with what we had in our presentation last time. And I, and I'm anxious to get started on doing something official.
All right.
Let's do it. Okay, and then, um, item number three is approval of the August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen ad hoc committee.
We have to push that. I took a lot of notes as recorder last time and I tried to distill them down to readable minutes and didn't do a good enough job. So I've asked Kathleen to take minutes this time. So I will make sure that, uh, when she posts hers for this next meeting, I post my finished ones from the last meeting. So I apologize.
I have one more thing if I could. And then I was approached by the newspaper again, second time or third time, and did respond to that. Um, you know, like what's, what's been happening with our committee. I don't know how many other people are doing that, but, um, I did, I was very positive about it the last time. But I would be interested if anybody else contacted or responded to the hub.
Um, Scott's been messaging me, has he been?
Me too.
I noticed.
I replied, it was in the article.
I saw that.
Yeah, and you were in it.
And he, he wrote about the committee three times out of the last four papers, so.
Yeah, he's been on top of it.
Yeah, he seems interested.
Been doing it every time he's made that.
Do we need a motion or anything to like move the minutes to next meeting or?
Um, I think we would only need a motion to approve them.
Okay.
Is that right?
I'll second to refuse.
We don't have any.
Okay, so then updates from state council and school board?
Um, do you guys have anything, any updates from state council?
Yes, do you want to give one? The, the council approved the appointment of Nicole to be co-chair.
Great.
Yeah, wasn't there something else in there?
Yep, they approved the, uh, approved admission statement, that's what it was.
Did you guys talk at all about a, a deadline potentially for this committee to have some sort of findings reported?
We mentioned in the, the, um, May.
Okay.
We didn't take action on that. We figured that.
Yeah.
School district had that under control.
We, we didn't take action either. We just mentioned, um, that, uh, or we passed around the idea of May and I don't, I don't think we had, uh, anyone outside of the people who attended this meeting who had enough of an opinion to, to say anything about it. So I think May is.
Then they can't hold us to it, can they?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's not technically approved. But, um, I think, uh, with, with some of the stuff that we have to talk about tonight, I think we'll hopefully feel confident that May is a, a good date for us. So, um, moving on to discuss, uh, the study of Stoughton young adults. Um, so we, we left the last meeting having heard a lot from, uh, Randy Stoker and, um, have been, or we had the opportunity to ask him all sorts of questions and, uh, he gave us, uh, he gave us sort of like a tentative approval of May as a date where we could get some sort of, uh, concrete results to pass back to the city and the Board of Education. Uh, and I spoke with him in between then because he's also asked us to reach out as much as we can or as much as we need to, uh, for help from the UW Extension System. And, um, I got a, we had a conversation about how this committee now could get started, uh, organizing a study like that, planning for a study like that, um, and eventually executing it. Uh, so I threw together just some really quick, simple PowerPoint slides, um, that I have on this computer that I could plug into that one, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I saw it. Okay, well, down there, I just didn't know how screen was. Remember you used Google Slides, I didn't even know my presentation was.
Good job.
First slide was a, a proposed, uh, um, highway fifty-one.
It's not working, but that's, that's gonna be fine. I can, uh, sort of click through here as I have to. There we go. Okay, so Randy, Randy suggested that, um, the very first step for us is to recruit a group of core organizers. And he mentioned that in that last meeting, that's typically been for them, uh, a group of three to six people to, uh, take the study and, and do the bulk of the organizing and reaching out to all of the community groups. Um, once we've recruited those core organizers, they can start to select the questions that we would like to, um, that we would like to ask. Uh, and we also have to make a decision on who we want to interview. Um, so in their study, they, or in their s- group of studies, uh, they interviewed adults in the age range of twenty to thirty-nine. So at some point we'll have to make a decision. Are we, um, are we interviewing young adults as a whole? Are we okay with a twenty to thirty-nine age range or some other age range? Are we looking specifically for, um, families, uh, or adults with children? And I don't, I don't think we have any of those answers right now, but that's for, um, potentially the, I think that's probably for this group to decide and then the core organizers, um, or the core group of organizers to go out and build into their study. Um, he also thinks that we need to immediately decide on an interview format. Do we want to do something group-based or do we want to do one-on-one interviews? I think they mostly did one-on-one interviews because I think in that, I think he mentioned that in that more intimate setting, um, you might get more direct answers, um, and have more opportunity for, uh, conversation and get more out of each individual person that you're interviewing. Uh, and then, once we have, um, all of that, uh, decided, I think then we have the bulk of the study planned out. And we begin recruiting interviewers, we begin trying to find subjects to interview. Um, so does anybody have any, any thoughts or questions on, um, on these steps as a beginning?
I talked to, uh, one person from, she's not from Stoughton, but she's, works in Stoughton. I mean, it's, it's an exclusive place to do, do that. And she, the question I asked her was, so what do you think draws people to Stoughton? And what, what do you, why do you think people stay here? Because she knows the community. And she had some really insightful answers about that. And so I don't know that we should restrict it only to people who live in Stoughton, but maybe those people who have some really clear ideas about, if they have some really great opinions, uh, about, so, so I'm not sure that we should restrict it. I'm just saying not, maybe not restrict it only to, um, to those people who are living in Stoughton, but maybe those people who intimately know Stoughton.
Yeah. And so I also think that with questions, or the question of what kind of people, uh, can we interview and what kind of perspectives are most valuable for us to get? Um, I think if, if we find people who are interested in talking to us, um, that's, that's, if it's easy for us to gather opinions, I guess, uh, or if we find it is easy, I, I'm sure that it's always, um, it would always, or it will always likely be easier to get people who are already willing to give you opinions rather than going out and recruiting people.
Right.
So I think we'll, as, as we begin to, to build this effort out, we might get a better sense for, um, if we even have to be restrictive, uh, at all, um, because it might, it might turn out to be hard to get voices.
Well, a part of what I thought Randy presented was that we really want to ask the young adults.
Yes.
Living here, why they're living here and approach it from that positive aspect rather than ask somebody who maybe works here, well, why aren't you living here? You know what I mean?
Well, he definitely, so he definitely did, um, did mention that we want to, uh, frame all of this in some sort of positive or affirmative, uh, or in some positive or affirmative way. Uh, and he also, he also, uh, mentioned several times that they tried to, um, they tried not to just ask personal opinions of why an individual might be living here, but why they think other people would move here and live here. Because you might, um, you might filter out some of their, uh, personal biases. Uh, because it's easy for anybody to sort of rant about what they love or what they really dislike, um, on a personal level. Uh, but you might get something a little bit more candid and honest if, uh, if, if you ask them to talk about someone else's or imagine someone else's perspective.
Can I talk to Mindy from UW Extension too? She said that, um, they're willing to help us make sure we're asking the right questions and, you know, helping like do a good study. You know, also that we have a proper example size and population and a different group there too. So Extension's willing and ready to help us with that.
Have they sent you the questions?
So the questions were part of the appendix in that.
Oh, they were.
The presentation that we passed up.
I probably.
We did this, uh, something like this for the Health Clinic a couple of years ago. And it's really important to recruit skilled interviewers and train, train them up really well on the types of questions that we want to ask. We want to make sure that, um, we're asking open-ended questions, questions invite conversation. And we want to make sure we're asking the same questions everywhere.
Any other questions or comments on, on these as being sort of our first steps? And my, my hope is that by the time we finish this meeting tonight, um, we don't, I don't expect us to have like a core group of organizers, uh, picked out necessarily because that might involve individuals who aren't at this meeting right now. But I would at least like us to have our plan or strategy for getting those core group organizers or recruiting them before we have our next meeting.
As far as, uh, people to interview, since most of us don't really hang out in that demographic, um, I know that, uh, the parent meetings at the school will give us some level of that. I even thought of things like my twenty-year-old son plays in a Pokemon league. Go, or what's that? Go Pokemon or? Yeah, Pokemon Go, yeah. But I mean, those are people that, they don't come typically to meetings and stuff, but it, you know, they're living here, so.
Yeah, and that was something that Randy, uh, mentioned was that, uh, the idea of this core group of organizers is that they, um, they are aware and actively engaged with all sorts of networks in the community that would lead us, um, to young adults. So I know that when I spoke to Randy last week, he, or I mentioned again to him, um, that our library has a ton of programs for young families and there's always little, or there's always families with little kids moving in and out of there. And so, um, he said absolutely, like any, any big group that, uh, is actively organizing things for young parents is a great place to start.
Team Churchill.
At my kid, yeah.
It's also, uh, mothers and preschoolers group.
Yeah.
Very active.
That's right, Mops.
Yeah, Mops. And, um, I, I can reach out and find out who the president is right now if we go that direction. But.
Yeah.
I know that's a very large, uh, exactly.
Yeah, that's awesome. And, I mean, I mean, Matthew, like, in an organization like yours, probably has families who have valuable insights for us, right? And, I mean, we just had the, um, what was the activities fair that was last month or two months ago? Um, but there's, there were probably like eighteen point organizations there that were all mostly targeting young families, so I'm sure that.
We have that list.
And then, sorry?
We have, our Parks Department had sent out that list.
Yeah.
So we have the contact list for those groups that were there.
Right, yeah. All of these would be excellent places to start. Um, so I'll move on to the, the next group, or the next thing Randy and I talked about. So I asked him if he felt, um, I asked him again if he felt like May was still, uh, a reasonable schedule for us. And he said that once you have that core group of organizers together, it'll take them about six monthly meetings, he said, to organize, execute, and compile the results for a complete study. Uh, so with that in mind, he also, he also mentioned that holiday season is coming up. So it would be good for us to, um, since it's going to be hard for us to, uh, get people to sit down for interviews anyways, it would be really good for us to just use October, November, and December for, um, planning and scheduling the entirety of this, or, uh, of this study and, um, possibly signing people up for interview schedules, um, and, and recruiting our interviewers. So, and then in January and February, we can start actually interviewing people and come sort of the beginning of spring, uh, or not Wisconsin spring, but other places spring. We can start to compile results and, and hopefully have something good by May. So I, I would like to see in October us recruit that core group that's going to run the study and both, uh, this committee and that core group connect everybody with UW Extension so they can help us start understanding, uh, I guess in detail the, the scope of the project that we're signing ourselves up for.
We had a, I, I was involved with, uh, with Mindy, who is a colleague of Randy's, actually, from, she did some interviewing, um, in a, in a really interesting way. She did a whole, whole group of people, but, um, her, the way she did it was a swag, I think swag model. Anyway, it's, it's who, what, why, where, when, and how. And, and we could, we could say, I mean, we could use kind of that model actually to set up our system here. Um, who do, you know, who interviews and who do they interview? Uh, what? And that goes back to Frank's thing, what, what are, what questions are we going to ask? Why are we doing it? You know, so we're clear with them and with us why we're doing it. When, which is our schedule? Where these interviews will take place, you know, uh, and it gives some direction to whoever that is. And then, that the last one is how? And that is how, how is this process, how is this process related from beginning to end? Uh, and how is it reported back to us? I mean, those, those are the, those are the sort of bare bones of the, that model. And if we could answer those questions, I think we would be well ahead, you know, at some point.
I think that's great. So then Mindy's gonna send us some dates for the next four weeks that she's available to leave us to, so she can help walk us through the process and set a framework up.
But I'd like to schedule as I, as I look at it right now. It's like it takes a while, but it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, I think, um, I think once we, once, I, I hate that I keep saying the words core group, um, just because I feel like I'm repeating myself a bunch. But once we have those individuals selected and, uh, in charge of sort of running the study, I think that, um, for them putting a schedule together and starting to reach out to organizations and stuff will, will hopefully be pretty straightforward and, uh, I don't know, something that they can get a lot of traction on between, um, November and December. But I do think that, uh, finding, finding the, the right people who are passionate about it and, uh, willing to do all of this work, because this will be a lot of work, is, is, is going to be a lot, so.
Do you have further criteria for that? And I'm coming totally at this as a school board member, I, I admit.
Yeah.
And, but, um, it might be that the core group, if they have kids in school, that might be a more relatable group. You know, you might, if you go from twenty to forty or whatever it is, um, you know, there, there's just a little more rapport when you can say, oh, what, you know, my kid goes to school here or whatever. Even with the, um, young adults that maybe aren't married yet or have kids yet, you know, it just seems a little more relatable, I guess. I don't know.
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't mean to be in, in charge of deciding or like laying out who these core group people have to be, um, at all. Uh, but my personal, um, my personal thought is that anybody who's passionate about this issue and has the ability to do the work would be a good candidate for it. So, um, and I also, when I talk about this core group of people, I, I don't mean to make it sound like anybody in this committee could not be a part of that core group of organizers. I just also don't want to, uh, or force everybody on this committee to sign up and just, uh, assume that this committee is going to do, um, all of the work for this.
Well, well, I mean, um, provide a slightly different perspective on that maybe. Um, part of the value of having this committee be, you know, at least make up most of that core group is that this, this committee is accountable. We're accountable to the, um, groups that appointed us, we're accountable to the voters, and we're already here because this is an issue that matters to all of us. Um, and I think that there is value in having a group of people who are passionate about the issue doing that, which is us. And I think there's also value in not having to go out and recruit additional folks. I mean, the community members who are here tonight, um, certainly I think would be valuable additions to it if you had, if this was something you all had time to do. But I am not sure that, it, it's really important to me that the people who are in this core group are in it to the end. And that we don't have people dropping off as they lose interest or they have other commitments or, you know, the going gets kind of muddy and, you know, it's meeting after meeting after meeting. So I think there's significant value in taking a core group that is mostly the people in this room moving forward.
Did Randy indicate to you sample size or what we're looking for in terms of numbers of interviews?
He mentioned that typically they had between, where they found a dozen to two dozen interviews as being a reasonable enough sample size to start to under, or to understand something about, um, what brings and keeps young adults to your community.
So if we have four, four interviewers or six interviewers, each one would do four or five or something like that?
Yeah.
Pretty close?
I would say so.
And that seems reasonable, it seems to me, that would be a reasonable number. I mean, if we, if we try for too many, you know, we may get burnout of the, you know, or just not be able to find that enough for these people that need to do that, that would be willing to do it. And we don't want to burn people out either.
Yeah, and also the way that, um, the way that they structured these case studies with the UW group was, um, to not necessarily have, the, the core group was an organizing body and didn't necessarily perform all of the interviewers, or all of the interviews. So they, um, would bring interviewers in, uh, sort of train them and educate them on the questions that they wanted asked and the, the points about the community that they were particularly interested in, uh, and delegated some of the work that way. So it might be that the core group that we sign up also do most of our interviews, but it, it definitely doesn't have to be. Um, they also used a lot of grad students to do some of their interviews, so. And Randy may or may not be able to find us grad student help. Depends on our schedule.
Well, one thing I would mention about this is at our first meeting, we talked about the importance of, at the end, having some actionable items or at least recommendations for actionable items. And I think it's really important in May, when these findings are presented, that there's at least recommendations for action items. Because I know in the community there is concern that we have a lot of studies and sometimes not enough traction afterwards. So I think, um, the most breaking connection is for two of the.
Seems to me we have two levels. We have, we have the organizing body from this body that are sending people out, which may include people who are actually in the main body.
Yes.
As Frank was talking about. And then the other, the other one is that we have, then we have, we have our two groups that report back to everybody, you know, through that. And we have, I think, the right or the, maybe even the obligation to come up with some ideas rather than just let it float out there. That we have, we have some definite recommendations. So if we can have it reported back to here and then individually report back to our own, like council and school, school or two. Um, but it seems to me that the oversight committee would be especially those people, both ad hoc and also the, like the mayor and the superintendent Laura and, you know, those, it seems that that's the core group that actually sends these people out and says, come back to us with interviews and then we can do, we can do the actual human's work of, of reporting it back to the community and our, and our individual, um, entities.
So I sent you and Nicole the list that I had. And I think maybe one of the action items for tonight would be is any groups that any of us know of, send the co-chairs a contact person. Come back at the next meeting with the group of people. At that meeting, we can identify which groups that we think would be best suited to do the interviews. We draft a letter or somebody, a script to call or contact the people on the list that we select. And then we set up a date for the training and then we work on questions.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how I see it going.
If we could get all of that, um, according to that schedule, I think we'd be on a great track.
And people who may, who do interviews may have ideas about what kind of questions they should be asking too.
And that was another thing that, um, Randy mentioned was, uh, as you do this study, you sort of refine your technique. And, um, it's, it's also why he encouraged, uh, throughout the study to have regular, he, he said monthly meetings, which is how this group meets anyways, but, uh, to have regular meetings so you can check in and see if the study is progressing in the way that you want. If, um, if you're interviewing the right people, if you're asking the right questions. So I, I expect that we will find, or that we will sort of refine how we, how we proceed throughout the months.
So we'd want to make sure our interviewers are. So we'd want to make sure our interviewers are also people that can come back with a report well. You don't want them to ad lib on questions a lot, though when you're talking with somebody that happens somewhat. But then we'd want to hear about that aspect of it too.
And that's another thing that Extensions offers is to train us and anyone, anyone that we recruit to perform interviews on how to ask these questions and how to keep the conversation going and where to dig and how to, I don't know, inspire elaboration on any of these topics. Other questions or thoughts?
You think it'd behoove us to have us put together all this stuff and then have either Mindy or Randy or somebody from Extension come back and say, what do you think and are we on the right track? And is this something that you could, you think is going to be valuable for us? Or should we just launch out on our own? That's a question I had.
Yeah, I would like to involve them at every step of planning this. So I think once we've decided tonight what the core group of organizers looks like and if it is people in this room that sort of gets us, gets us started a bit quicker, I think we take all of those people and ask Randy and Mindy and whoever else they feel is best suited to help us to sit down and talk us through kicking off the study.
Who's Mindy?
Training us with them.
Sorry, Mindy, do one of you guys from the city want to...
Yeah, I don't know who that is.
She's from UW Extension.
What?
She's from UW Extension.
Oh, she is.
She actually was helping us with the core groups, talking about the eighteen ninety-two building.
Oh, okay.
And she's done other things for us in the city too.
I just wasn't familiar with the name.
She's familiar with that word.
Okay.
And she's pretty familiar with, I think, the city. And I think she's pretty familiar now with the school. And schools in Stoughton, I think she's pretty familiar with the actual city of Stoughton too. So she is, she's probably more familiar with this whole thing, this whole area than Randy. Randy's, both of, I think they work pretty close together, as I understand it.
Hey, I've got to keep working. All right, I don't have to keep kind of... Okay, any further questions about this proposed schedule? So then, we've already talked about a lot of this stuff already. But the next thing Randy and I talked about was how UW can assist us. So they have their expertise, which is research technique, ethics in researching to make sure you, to make sure you take care of people's data and privacy concerns, composing the report, analyzing the results, and then also very importantly, that volunteer training we'll talk about.
So something that we might want to think about is that it's likely that any documents that we produce, including reports of interviews, are going to be public records.
Okay.
So we should think about how we're going to handle that and what sort of, what training we need to give to the people who are doing these interviews and what we need to tell to the people we're interviewing as well.
Okay.
Does that seem right to you, Tim?
Yeah, it does. I mean, it's real simple of the people that are doing the interviewing to summarize the interviews and not share their individual notes with anybody, but share the summary. Because then the summary becomes the public document, not their individual notes that said, Tim Swadley said this. Or I was interviewing Tim Swadley, this is what he said. So you can't really attribute it to any one person.
So maybe that's part of the training, is helping with that.
I'm sure they would do, that's part of the training.
Yeah.
And some of these, they go back to, and I've just been involved in this with my educational... But if they want to go back, they number potential interviewees. They put a number with them or whatever, so they can always, but they don't do it by name.
Yeah, that's all, I'm sure that's all part of the protocol. It's not available for as far as that.
So it might be, and I hate to beat this to death, but I'm a lawyer and that's what I do. So the value of having a third party conduct these interviews, even if we had to pay them, might be that they could do a more professional job of doing this and write interview summaries that are going to be useful and allow us to still protect the privacy of the people we're interviewing. Good point. And I don't know, is that something Extension would do for us if we asked them, John?
I don't know that Extensions would perform the interviews themselves, but they, I mean, they did like ten, twelve of these studies. So I think that when we talk to them, they'll help us understand where the best place to get interviewers would be. And he also mentioned in his, during his presentation that some of the, some of the local governments where they perform these studies have ended up using the information, the results gathered. So they have, they have, I assume that the Extension system has plenty of experience in working with public entities like ours and will help us figure out what the best ways to carry out these things are and make sure that we're doing it legally and within open records. Matthew, did you have a question or comment?
So would a video compilation be a possibility? Of positive questions, of each of the questions? Let's say we answer, ask all these questions and then you're recording them through your recording device or whatever the case might be. And then you compile it all together, summarize it in paper now, this is today. Yeah, it's okay to use this in the video. Would that be okay? Or that would be against the rules of what you were trying to do here?
I believe that if you ask somebody for permission to use video of themselves speaking to you, that it's probably illegal to do so. Randy, do you have thoughts on that? I don't know in terms of the data gathering versus like in hindsight, if we were able to, if we were able to find people again afterwards and ask if they, if we heard some of the positive things and they'd be willing to be on record sharing those. I don't know what's going to give us the best, the best research for that.
Yeah, let me think about that. I think it would be legal to record it if they consented.
Of course.
Yeah, I think it would be legal to publicize it. I'm not sure that would necessarily get us the best answers, so.
Yep.
You know, because if you and I are just talking, that's one thing. And if I put a camera in front of your face, that's a different thing. You know, when we're just trying to figure out information.
Okay.
Yeah, do you see what I'm saying?
I see where you're going, yes.
Yeah.
Although I have a different feel in my head.
And tell me what you think.
So I have a, you know, people are just, you know, you ask these... I don't know if you guys went through the questions at all. Some of these questions are actually pretty decent and they actually bring in a lot of positive feedback to what they were trying to do. So like, you know, how do you feel about population growth in the community? Number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel great about this. I hope that it does grow so we don't have that three percent decline in the population schools. You know, or how does actually population growth in the community affect you? You know, I don't think it affects me at all, but I think it affects the community in some way. That'd be pretty awesome here. And be able to feel, you know, show that feeling of, hey, yeah, I want to see this happen. Rather than, well, John Doe said this, 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 and this in a text message or a slide or anything of that nature. This adds more feeling to what you're trying to accomplish. At least in my thought.
No, 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 I'm looking at you like this because this isn't a perspective that I've thought of before. I guess I had thought of this in a, as being used in a different way. But I see what you're saying. I see where you're coming from.
Yeah, you know.
What do you do, what do you do with the guy who says, yeah, you know what, I think we've got too many people here already?
Fine, good job. You know, keep them part of the, if you want these files, keep them on file. You know, you can't delete it, right? I mean, that's what you guys are saying. You have to keep it on record on this. So you keep it and you still have your notes, but you make it simple. A, you have a multiple choice point and then you survey monkey or whatever the case is. And then you say, you know what, you like this, great, excellent. You know what, you liked B, or whatever the case is. You know, and then you could even write in their opinion or whatever the case might be. And then, you know, as the video's going, any individual that you have that, you know, this was a really cool note. You check it and then you bring it back to edit. You give it to WSDO or somebody of the nature and they take it, compile it, and then make a quick minute video or a minute and a half video of how full Stone is. And then from the inside, you take that video and obviously you share it through your different news stations, isn't it?
Well, I kind of see a different thing on this because if we're trying to get a real cross-section of the young adults, I know, like, say you've got a person who's heavily tattooed and the community at large is, you know, seeing the person speak. People naturally assign their opinion based on the look of the person. Not that that's cool, but it happens. And, you know, I'm hoping we also interview our more diverse population. And I just wouldn't want to bring that bias, I guess, to the greater community.
I don't think there would be any bias. And we do have to make sure that we focus on...
I think one of the most interesting questions or the answers to one of those questions was, you know, there's not enough bars in Hayward.
Right.
And I've been thinking about that, as to why that person would say it. And, but as a young person, if I was, if there were no sports bars in Stone, I might say, you know, I think we should have more bars in Stone. You know, I mean, depending on how you do that. And I think, I think your point about having it somewhat open-ended is a good idea too, where you can have a, you can have an open-ended question like, like you mentioned, the first question was quite open-ended, actually. You know, what do you think about growth, you know, kind of thing? And, you know, that's a very interesting question because we wouldn't typically ask a question like that. We're going to come in with some bias, which is, we want to see all kinds of growths. You know, we want to see at least three percent growth a year. But, you know, other people may not have that and they should feel free. And then, you know, and then maybe, maybe at the end, say you've got some great ideas, you know, somebody as close as we could do it.
Yeah.
So, John, let me ask the group and go back to the question. What is the purpose of our study? Because if the purpose of our study is just to collect information, to see what young families want or what attracts them to Stone or why they stay in Stone, then an offshoot of that may be the video as an action step.
Yeah, maybe some sort of marketing campaign.
So if that's our ultimate goal, to provide the district and the city information on how do we do that, then I think just the script and the text interviews are good. If we're taking it to the next step of this turns into a marketing tool, then I think that's an awesome idea, is making that video with a cross-section of people and saying, you know, why did you choose Stone? Why do you live here? And get it out to everyone.
Yeah, I think that once we, I know that there will be ethical and scientific concerns about how we perform these interviews. And I don't think that we can sort of make any decisions related to those in terms of using the information directly or feeding the information directly back into the community and how that's going to impact the ethics or the science of the research. So I think that this is a question that we can, once we have that group together, that we can ask the UW people and figure out what the best way is for us to gather, the most reliable way is for us to gather information that we can use.
I just have one concern and that is that I think I came into this maybe, you know, even wanting to be an interviewer or in a core group or whatever. But there may be some, especially with like core group meetings and that kind of thing, those are public record meetings if any of us are involved in them. Any elected official, I think we would have to notice pretty much everything we do. If they report back to us, I'm not sure we're in the same standard of, you know, of adherence to public records. Both access to public records and also public records for open meeting law. So I guess I, I guess I would feel more comfortable having us assign them and have them report back to us. I mean, that's where...
And, so I'm just trying to...
So you avoid all kinds of, all kinds of pitfalls if you stay out of the, actually stay out of the mix, kind of.
But what would be the downside to this group and the open transparency to the community here and let's discuss the questions and who we're going to interview and seeing that we're getting a cross, trying to get a cross-section of individuals to interview to get the information? And I'm just trying to...
I think that's fine. I think, I think it's just that we're the group that they, that they report to us. And that's because anytime they report to us, we're open meeting. We're really under, we're really under pretty high standards that both, I think, the school board level and also council level.
So are you talking specifically about the interviewers or the core group?
No, I mean, I mean, if we, if I would be an interviewer, I'd feel like I was sort of stepping away from my role as being kind of more of a policy overseer. I don't know, that's a bad term.
Yeah, no, I'm with you on that.
The policy overseer rather than an active, you know, an active in this whole process. I think we're kind of the overseer.
I would be concerned, or I do have a personal concern with members of this committee partaking in those interviews because we all have our own personal biases and have our members of the bodies who are soliciting this information from the community and...
With the exception of potentially of our guests.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's not to say that we couldn't overcome those. But if we can, if we can find and train interviewers within schedule and resources to do this, I'd be very interested in offloading some of that responsibility. Are there any thoughts on that?
I think if you, if we talk to Randy and if he can help us do the video recording of the interviews, I think that that would help with the potential bias thing. Because if we as interviewers knew that we were being recorded as well, I think that would help keep everyone sort of to the questions and to the sort of unbiased. And then, then we would have that footage then that we could potentially use for marketing purposes later, as long as we hadn't consented.
I do have a lot of concern about using footage from the study for marketing purposes just because I think there are two distinct things. So one is like a scientific study together, unbiased information. And maybe through that, there's something where we say, you know, would you be willing to be contacted afterwards if we're, you know, want to follow up something and do marketing at that point? But I really think we need to separate the two because we don't want people to say things just for a promotional video or to kind of take the results. Even where we presented, it's like, well, they did this study, but it was really a marketing thing. And we really want to hear what's going on, you know, without any bias or people changing their answers. So I think we should separate the two.
Yeah, and I imagine when we ask Extensions, they'll probably have a pretty clear-cut answer for us on this. So if everybody's okay, I think that the concept of potentially using this information directly in some sort of, in some sort of capacity after the study is over is on the table. But I think we need to ask our researchers about that. Okay, so past that expertise block, Randy had some immediate suggestions. I already mentioned that we have a busy holiday season coming up. We probably won't be able to fit any interviews in. So if we just plan to not begin interviews until next calendar year, we'll probably be able to stay within schedule, at least for the beginning of the study and not be biting off more than we can chew. He mentioned considering having high school student volunteers for conducting interviews. I see Frank shaking his head that I personally am wondering if I, if I heard him right. I'm just wondering what level of training it would take to... to have a high school student sort of digging into some of the questions about being a young family and being an adult in the Stone community. And I don't mean that in a disparaging way at all to our excellent high school students that we have in Stone. But I just did not get the impression that they used high school students to conduct these interviews when Randy was presenting. So, Tim?
I would, I think if we used high school students, unfortunately, we open ourselves up to people who will not accept the findings of the study.
I could see that too.
Because they're high school students and how do you know that it's pure? And how do you know it was just some biases and things like that? So I would be a little leery. I'd also point out that what makes all of us busy also makes the high school students busy. So the high school students, that would probably be excellent for this, probably have a busier schedule than any of us and less time to carve out to do something.
And I totally agree. And I think we could just say, we want our interviewers to be somewhere in the age group that we're talking about them interviewing. You know, somewhere between twenty and thirty-nine, I think, is fine. You know, I don't know that we need, I mean, not that these discriminate against older interviews, but I mean, if these people are going to be getting information from their core group, I think then we should probably, that would be a good, that would be a good way of doing it rather than having a, being a student. I mean, it could be college students, but, you know, maybe not, you know, in that age group, but not, I think, not high school.
Let me just put this out there. I think that interviewing is a professional skill, that there are people who are trained to conduct interviews and whose professional development is centered around the ability to interview people, to follow up with good questions and, as importantly, to write reports that summarize the results of the interviews after they're done. Given the stakes involved here, I mean, I view this as an existential issue for the school district. I would like to see, I think these interviews are super important and I would like to see them done by professionals. I would like to see them done by skilled interviewers who are skilled report writers. So that when we get the data that come out of this, that we know that it accurately reflects what the interview subject said, that areas of doubt or ambiguity were followed up on and that we can rely on what's in the reports. I supervise investigators for a living. And I can tell you the difference between a good investigative interviewer and a bad investigative interview is night and day. One is useful, one is not. And so I feel very strongly that we need to either use professionals here or use people who are trained by professional interviewers.
Is there, are there standards for, is there like a committee of national interviewers? I don't know, but.
They're very.
Just wondering where you would, how are you, how do you glean those people?
If I were going to glean them, I would go to the, if I was doing it on the cheap, I would go to people in the Aralima program or in the law enforcement training program at M A T C. I'd contact both those programs and get people to do out of those. If we had money to burn, which I understand the city does, but the district doesn't, then I would hire, you know, somebody like the extension people to the group. But this is a professional skill and the quality of the results we get will depend significantly on the quality of the people that we interview.
So that's something we can bring up definitely, maybe with Mindy, I think, to help us find.
Well, I'm sorry, Nikki, I couldn't hear you.
That's something we can bring up to Mindy when we meet with her too to help us make sure we have a solid group of interviewers.
That the university would be trained or they are trained in protecting people's privacy if they have choice in research.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we should be able to.
Yeah, there's people who can do this and do it well. There's also tremendous amount of number of people who are very willing but can do it very badly.
So the last two points on this list are to, regarding sample size, between a dozen and two dozen interviews, Randy suggested would be reasonable for us and then to hold monthly meetings to stay organized. And he believes that we can complete this in six months or so. So I already mentioned those, I'm just going to skip forward. So the next step for us, the top thing that I wrote there was a document repository. We've had, we've had all sorts of research studies, data passed, probably mostly through me at this point. And I have not yet put all of those things together in a central place for everybody to review. But I think that it would be worthwhile for us as a group to have a central location where any outside information or research that we've assembled up to this point is readily accessible for all of us and for the community. And then any information that we, that we collect throughout this process and is sort of cleared and protected in terms of privacy can be posted as well. So Laura, you sent me a document earlier this week that I pulled up here that I'd like to at least make people familiar of. I know that you sent it to more than just me, but I wasn't sure if it got out to everybody. Okay, and the city has sent over a bunch of stuff and you've sent over a bunch of stuff. So I'd like to put all of those things in one central location. Does the school board, or does the school board or district or the city, do you guys have methodologies for doing this and making it easily accessible to the public? When we have subcommittees or anything like that?
We can create a folder next to our packets. And it usually just says additional materials. We do that often when there's a handout at a meeting anyway, because those handouts are public records. So what we would have to do is forward the information to the clerk.
Okay.
And she could input the city's end of it. I don't know what the school district has. We can do it, we're done.
Okay, cool. Yeah, we can do that. Is there anybody who would be interested in being the point person for making sure that all of these, all of this material gets collected and posted?
I've been sending that to the two chairs, so I would like that, I don't know. You guys could maybe, one of you two did do that or.
The boss?
Then, yeah.
Because the information should go to the chairs anyway and then all you have to do then is forward it if you're in the hall.
And we're going to maintain it at two places then? Both the district and the city site or just one?
Well, I, I don't mind maintaining it at the school district site. I, if you guys think it's valuable to have.
For public records.
At the city site as well. I mean, we post, we post meeting agendas in two places and minutes in two places, so.
It's probably the best practice.
Then, yeah, from now on, if you guys send that to the two of us, we will make sure that we forward it to the public location. And as soon as we have those, I don't know, repository places will compile.
I mean, I hate to add more work onto your plate, but that's where all the information's going anyway.
No, I'm fine with it.
John?
Yeah.
University of Wisconsin has a survey center that will conduct surveys for you, either by mail or face-to-face or group. And their researchers would do it for you. There's going to be a price to it, but it's the University of Wisconsin Survey Center.
Mindy brought that up too in our conversation, so we can explore the price options.
Could I get, can I just back up just a little bit? So there's four levels of hierarchy in our little group here. The council and the school board is the top level. Second level is our level. Third level is the core group that we're going to be doing. And then the fourth level would be the interviewers. They report back to the court group, they report back to us, they report back to the school district and the city council eventually.
Right.
Is that how people view it?
Yeah, kind of. It's sounding like we're somewhat coalescing on the court group being mostly constituted of members of this committee. So in that sense, it might be more down to three. But the interviewers are not entirely autonomous as well. They have a sort of strict purpose of gathering information according to clear direction. So I'm also hoping that that doesn't, that doesn't branch out into its own sort of, I don't know, governing or organizing body in any capacity. I'm not sure that that's.
So I stand corrected that the court group actually is potentially part of this group too?
Potentially, I mean, that's the next, that's the next question that I have listed here. I would like us to leave this meeting having decided mostly what we want this court group of organizers for this study to look like. Do we want to open the discussion back up to that and talk about?
Whether or not the people in this committee are advisors to that court or part of the court group.
Correct. That's the question.
Do you have a number in mind for how? Because if you have too many, it kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah, I don't have a number. Randy suggested three to six in his presentation and then again in the discussion that I had with him. So I assume that that is just the number of people that they require to do all of the work. I didn't ask for any elaboration on what that means. So I, I would like this to be as open to discussion as possible because I don't want to be personally giving the impression that I'm trying to mandate any of this. Are there thoughts? Are there people here who are interested in participating in organizing this study and being a go-between between the study and the University of Wisconsin system and organizing, helping organize interviewers and soliciting interviewees from networks in the community?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no.
What kind of restrictions do you, are there that if we do that?
I, I don't come with any restrictions.
Let's say I was a court group leader and I report to you and I report to you, right?
Or?
Maybe, yeah, I think we're working all that stuff out.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, am I then part of the open document thing that you guys are discussing?
You're not a public official, so.
That doesn't matter then?
So what happens when we have, as government bodies here, what happens when we have subcommittees or organizations like, the city just did a comprehensive plan? Were there any government official subject open records involved with that?
Well, it was through the planning commission, so they coordinated it and all the meetings were noticed because we always had the potential. So we always err on the side of noticing it and keeping public records for it. It's just safer that way.
So if I understand the recent, I think it's Appleton Supreme Court decision, the school district of Appleton on open records. If the school board as a whole, so which means the school board, nine people sitting.
Yeah.
Establish a committee. That committee is subject to the open records and open to the public. So this committee is, because it was established by the school board. But I don't believe a subgroup of this committee is. Does that make sense? Because it was not established by, the school board didn't say, add, create a subgroup, this core team to do this. The school board would do that from our end, that would then be subject to open.
So.
Because then it's just the subgroup, the core team is just a work team to this committee.
Unless there was a quorum.
Right.
Right.
Which it probably won't be in this case.
But, Tim, then the committee that was created to, to build the school districts' compensation money, they operate as if they were subject to open records?
We didn't until the end. We didn't until the Appleton case came out.
Oh.
And then we did, where we posted the meetings for the public because we had to. But until that Appleton case came out, all the school districts were operating that that was a work product internally.
And so posted the meetings for the public, what about communications that happened in between? Are those, because there's work that happened, there's tons of work that happens in between those meetings. Is, how's that treated or how is it treated?
It's a gray area.
Yeah, I assume so. I don't, I assume that it's not feasible for us to operate as if the full elected bodies are doing the entirety of those work themselves.
But would it be a best practice to just assume that the court group, you know, I don't know. I don't know how, I haven't read that case, but considering there'll be elected officials in that court group.
I think behaving as, as if the work that we're doing is subject to open records requests or public records requests is reasonable. Behave yourselves in communications. But the thing that I'm curious about is that this, this study group is, is not voting on things or deciding school district policy or things like that. So do we have to, we don't have to worry about like a quorum of that group being together or on like an email chain in terms of just organizing the study? Is that something that we have to worry about? Is it, also is it, are we digging too deep immediately in this? And can we answer this question about assembling the core group without?
I think we're digging down.
If I was a member of this court group, I'd feel better because potentially I'm open. If somebody asks for open records from me, I would have to give it to them at some point. So I think I like this structure better where we send, we do a court group that's not involved, involving elected members. I'd rather, I'd rather stay off that just to avoid, it may be more cumbersome, but I'd like to. That's why I didn't raise my hand to be part of it because I am an elected official and I don't know that I'd be comfortable ethically not to if I'm having a meeting to be hosting it. So I don't know how others, I don't know how you would still.
Well, I can pose it to our city attorney and see if he has an opinion on it.
I think I got a little lost here at some point, but I'm not sure what the court group will do.
The court group organizes the study, so meets with extensions to, I think, organizes and performs the entire study. This committee doesn't perform the study directly. That court group of organizers performs the study. Now that court group of organizers can't be mostly composed of these committee members, but.
So should the court group be employees? And are we talking about a district employee, a city employee, and maybe somebody from the chamber or a community member?
What was suggested and what they did in, in all the case studies that U W performed is that the biggest responsibilities of this court group are finding interviewers and finding people to interview. So they want to make sure that the court group is connected within the community and knows where to look for good interview candidates. And that doesn't necessarily mean specific people, but also like a personal solicitation to be a part of this study and give an hour of your time for an interview is typically more effective than just a general call. But they want to make sure that the people organizing this study know of or are willing to go out and search for enough networks of young adults to be able to get the subjects. to be able to get the subjects inside.
I feel as though this group here is assembled because of the desire to want to make these changes happen, this study happen, and it also, I think, fairly well connected to the community. So especially since there's a possibility we might be hiring the interviewees, I mean, the interviewers.
Yeah.
Then really, it seems to me like that's the mission of this core group is to be the core.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I kind of agree, but I think that we should just get a vote on how much you would need for them to provide interviewers. And then I think that if we're the core group, we just need to pick the questions. We need to come up with lists that everybody can send in, a list of people that might be potential interviewees or places to solicit individuals.
If I heard Randy write, I think it's necessary to pare down to that three to six people because the discussion gets more dragged out. Everybody's going to have opinions on which questions should be asked. Don't go to that group for somebody, you know what I mean? You just, you want to pare it down. And there's going to be a lot more time spent by that core group. And, you know, right now, we're meeting once a month, but this would be an additional once a month in addition to our city councilor's school board every other week. So you want, you know, you want to make sure that the core group are really all in.
I agree with that and think it's valid and I think it would be if we did have eight or nine or, I mean, ten people, eleven people here. If we had all of those people on, I think it would be pretty difficult to organize meetings and effectively delegate and have the quick turnaround time that we're looking at. So I think down in the three to six person range as they suggested and as they used for the rest of their studies is probably a good place to shoot for.
What's the time commitment on the core group, do you think, Joe?
I don't know. I, we have to, the core group of, the core group organizing this study will, within the next month, let me go back. Austin. So core group of this study will oversee all of these activities. So they will make sure, or in October, they will reach out and sit down with probably Randy and Mindy are the two specific individuals at least that will sit down with and lay out the path of the study, estimate costs, and get a detailed schedule. In November and December, they will be responsible for recruiting the interviewers, whether that's paid and through some sort of official avenue or whether the extensions folks have another suggestion, they'll have to figure all that out. They will have to start reaching out to community members to find subjects to interview and they will have to start laying out an interview schedule in January and February. They will have to make sure that all of those interviews are performed, potentially rescheduled for scheduling conflicts. And then in March and April, they will be the ones responsible for, along with the UW Extensions group, compiling the results and analyzing them. So I don't have an answer for what exactly that time commitment is going to be, but...
Considerable.
A lot, yeah.
Yeah, so it looks heavy in October. Like the real crunch work is going to be done in October. Then less in November and December, especially if the interviewers are doing the scheduling themselves.
But that also includes picking the subjects.
Yeah, but there's more time to do that.
Yeah.
See, it's also holiday season, so I would guess the last, the final two weeks of December are sort of off the calendar.
So just looking at this, it looks to me like the core group is going to meet weekly in October. And then probably twice in November, once in December. That's what that looks like to me. What do you think, Tim?
If there's already the questions, it's not like they're coming up with the questions on their own. I don't think it's going to be weekly in October.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Because it's just a matter of going through the questions and saying, we as a group like this, we as a group don't like this.
That's where the number of people in the group makes a big difference in the amount of time, I think.
The study, the appendix here, they discuss that. They discuss the point of, hey, you go through these questions and then you filter through which ones you like, which ones you don't like. So once you start to filter through them and finding ways to compile the data, then you research it and then you find out which ones you really like. And as you go further along into the appendix, they start talking about themes that most individuals, once you start digging into and making sense of the data, you will find a lot of the people around you in that area will find that consistent theme. Once you find your consistent theme, then you find ways to draw out further from that theme. So, I mean, that's already laid out in that appendix already. Sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, that's, same way after that. And there's, and again, just kind of off the top of my head. Other than assembling those questions in the actual survey, would you want a small group? I don't see why this group can't do the rest of it. Recruit interviewers. We're going to have to, this group's going to have to have a conversation of, are we going to hire out? If we hire out, they're already recruited, whatever organization we go to will recruit the thing. Identify young family subjects. Well, that's something you're going to want, a broad representation at the table, throwing out ideas of where we get those subjects and who those people might be.
Well, who ultimately decides, you know, does the whole group vote on it then? Or that's where I see getting a little...
To me, if they're saying that ideally they, you know, twelve is a good number, you're going to want to identify more than twelve people because some people aren't going to want to participate in the study or have the time or... So if, if, let's say you identify fifty people. Well, you're going to get probably twenty of them that aren't going to want to partake in the survey. Well, then you have thirty people and thirty people is a great cross-section as well. So I don't see having more names on the list as a bad thing, where we're throwing out ideas. So again, there's a part of me that wonders, do we have a subgroup of this committee of maybe three people and we charge them with coming up with the survey questions? Working with Mindy and...
Randy.
Randy, thank you. Coming up with the survey questions, that group then reports back here. We went through the questions, here's our recommendation for the questions. Realizing that when they come back to us, it's not our job to go through them and pick up, why did you choose this one or this one? They've already done that, John. Then the survey, the survey's been designed. Or that it's just a matter of figuring out who's the who.
Well, yeah, the one flaw I see is, it's easy to assemble that list of fifty, but if this whole group has to, I mean, then who contacts who from that fifty to see if they're willing to do, it just seems like there'll be too many.
I do think that, I think that this group should receive those monthly status updates and approve anything that is, will in some way reflect on, I don't know, the performance responsibilities that those of us legally elected have. But I also agree with, I guess, all of the sentiment that's been expressed that we need a group of between three and six people to carry out most of the work that is performed in this study in between these tag-up meetings. Are there, I asked this question earlier, but it was before we had much of this discussion. So I'll ask it again. Are there people who are particularly interested in being involved in this work, sort of instantly? Two, Julie Kathleen. Did you get it?
Yeah, I'm making it halfway in.
Okay. I, since I've spoken a bit with Randy and have a pretty strong interest in this, I'd be willing to be a part of this core group. Nicole, would you be willing to join us since you have contact with Mindy? And I don't think it would be a drag in any way to have the two co-chairs.
No, I don't think so either. And we all have kids in school or young kids, so...
Matthew, Josh, are you guys interested in at least us communicating with you throughout October while we sort of get an understanding of what the scope of this project is going to be?
Is this an actionable item?
What?
Is this an actionable item? So if it is, I would move that we would have the designated people you just mentioned on our core group to come up with the study and reach out and get the, get a good idea of who we're going to interview and what. That would be my motion is to actually do it.
Yeah, before next meeting?
Yeah, I don't, just for notes, I didn't get what that is.
Yeah, it would just be, just be that, those people who would be on this core group committee to organize this whole thing be Nicole, you, both chairs and then our two folks here. I don't know, I'm not mentioning any, I'm not, you can mention names.
Oh, okay.
Frank, go ahead.
Laura?
I would like to not be on that.
Honesty, yeah.
I would not like her to be on that. These two are both in the chamber.
Okay.
And they're both on my ambassador team, so we meet frequently.
So my only concern about this layout is it's a little district-heavy?
I'm good with that. Nicole will be on there, I think she can represent, yeah, she can handle that.
Three to one?
I don't think we're really fighting about differences.
No, I think we're all going to fight.
No, but the perspectives of the city and the district may not necessarily align.
Well, it's going to come back to this group anyway.
Yeah, and really, it shouldn't be a city versus school district thing because essentially what we're doing is looking at the questions and getting a cross-section of people who might be willing to be interviewed.
Right, I didn't say anything about versus. What I did say...
Well, I said that, so...
Exactly. What, my point is that I think there are different perspectives that city representatives and school district representatives might bring to this group.
Okay, I will, I'll be on.
Okay, that'll get you seven.
Yeah. I can drop off then. And that way we stay at our six number.
I think seven is fine.
You'll lose somebody for a meeting.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we'll have everybody at a meeting anyways.
Yep.
So I'll be on, but just with a concern that if it's a, you know, I'm just concerned about us being accountable to potential open records. But I don't think, I don't think this really matters. Do you?
I'm fine with everybody in this room, so I don't have an issue. It could be all school board people as far as I'm concerned and we'll get it done.
So as not to be heavy on school district, I'm willing to do it, so.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Was, were we thinking about doing the hiring of the interviewees through the UW session?
I think so, yeah.
Is that something that we...
Sorry?
We are hiring interviewees. Is that going to be out of the city council or is that going to be out of the school board?
I think that we will have to talk with the researchers about potential interviewers and if there are pools of interviewers that they suggest who have a cost associated with them, we'll have to get some options laid out to this group and then feed it back up and find funding that, because we don't have the funding on this committee.
Okay, so I modify my motion to include me too.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the table, I think, if I understood it correctly, is to appoint a core group consisting of John, Jill...
I'll withdraw. I just feel seven is a little overkill, so it's okay, you two, so, from school.
Josh and Matt.
Josh, Matt, Sid, Nicole, and Nicole. That's the motion. I second the motion.
Are you allowed to do that?
Why not?
He's not a voting member.
Am I not?
Is there a voting member?
So somebody, so somebody second my motion who is a voting member.
Oh, okay, whatever. I'm not, yeah, since I withdrew, I'll second it, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Right?
Yes. And we can, as we visit this, if we need to shuffle members around, I assume that everybody agrees that the most important component of this study is that it gets done and creates actionable items for the city and the school district and the chamber and the rest of our stakeholders. So when we revisit at the end of October, we will see how it's going and see if there are any changes that we have to make to that single actionable item.
So John, I propose that our meeting of the core group be on October eighth, Monday night, or some other time.
The school board meeting, right?
That's a new, the school board meeting. How about, do we get it started right away and do it on the first of October?
That's why you don't want too big a group, right?
Well, I'd like to get it on my schedule tonight because we're really booked.
Yeah, I just mean, it's hard to...
So I know that Randy is out of town until October second and I would like us to meet with Randy and Mindy, maybe just right off the bat because I think that we're all on the same page in terms of the work that needs to be done and I don't know how much use we would have in a small body of us meeting together without their input. So can, can we, I would like to just get back to this group. I can send a message to, we can send messages out to them tonight and tomorrow morning and get back to people as soon as we can with a potential meeting date.
Okay.
How about the regular group then?
So the regular group, do we want to do four weeks from now? Where would that put us?
Or do you want to do November instead of October to give the core group a chance to meet and get things, discussions and things in place? And then report in November?
Yeah, we can do that. What would the first, what would the first time, the first Monday night in November be that we could meet?
It'd be the, because we're the, yeah, the twelve.
No, we have ERC meeting.
First meeting, oh, first meeting in what?
In November.
November would be the fifth and I cannot make it.
We can't either. We have a regular board meeting. We don't have to do Monday nights, it just seems that Monday nights off of board meetings work well.
ERC meeting, but that's just like...
Okay, how about Tuesday, the, how about Tuesday, the thirtieth of October?
Well, we just mentioned that we thought it might be, might be useful to push it off another week or two after October just so that we can, if there are groups of researchers, for instance, that we have to get a quote from or something.
How about election day, Tuesday night, election day, the sixth?
Yeah, I would prefer not to do election day. What about the thirteenth, the week after that?
We have a, I think we have a budget meeting then. We have a, I think we have a, a budget meeting that night.
On the thirteenth?
And that city council meeting too.
Okay, um, what about the seventh or the fourteenth?
I've heard, you know, that right?
Yeah. I can't do a great to do, I'll be...
Fourteenth works.
Fourteenth? Going once? Twice? Fourteenth of November, Wednesday night?
Seven o'clock.
Fourteenth of November, Wednesday night, seven o'clock. This ad hoc.
If you need anything from me, just let me know.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't need us here. We're not voting members anyway. Frank, you don't have to come either.
Yeah, I'm going to keep trying to welcome, sorry, no, I'm alive.
Um, all right, then, uh, this core group, uh, if you guys are all okay, I would like to just schedule a time based on Randy and Mindy's schedules. So, we will, Nicole and I can talk together and coordinate with the two of them and then find a date that works for everybody.
Is that during the day, you think, or at the end of the evening?
I, evening, um, I think they'll probably be available. Randy said or insisted the last time that I asked him to come to this meeting that, uh, this is part of, or this work is part of his job, so, uh, he's available to meet in evenings because it's...
Just so you're aware that at the end of the month is better for, typically better for the city council than at the beginning of the month when we have all kinds of committee meetings.
Okay. So, we had one other item on the agenda. Um, it was to discuss, uh, research or data that already existed, but I, uh, in the interest of, of time and sort of the progress that we've already made, I would like to, um, push that off. And, uh, we talked about collecting all of the information that we have right now into some sort of repository and, um, I know that we haven't done a great job in distributing all of that information yet anyway, so I'm not sure that everybody would be on the same page. Is everybody okay with, uh...
I would, I would ask that that be a, an, uh, an agenda item, a future agenda item.
All right.
And then...
Now, you could ask Randy or Mindy if, what information they think is really relevant to where we're going to go with this site.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And if there's no more other thing on, or I would move to the...
Um, we have set a date and established a core group. There is nothing else on the agenda. Is there a second for that motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, guys.
I do feel rejected.
I do. Tim, do you need a video to turn off the recording, Tim?
Rejecting and factoring. Yeah, sorry, I can't count.
Yeah, I think you're probably figured out. It'll be okay. I think as long as we have, uh, there's like...